Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council on Tuesday, July 23, 2024. Would Clerk please take the role?
Mr. Charlin?
Here.
Mr. Coghill?
Here.
Ms. Gross? Mr. Mosley?
Here.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Mrs. Strasburger?
Here.
Mrs. Warwick?
Here.
Mr. Wilson? Mr. Lavelle President?
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands as one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate, and just as for all.
Thank you. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Our next order of business is proclamations, and we have one to be read into the record.
Council members, Kail Smith and Council Member Lavelle present, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare July 24, 2024 to be Tom Dinuno Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
To move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Proclamation has been approved. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters that concern official action or deliberation which may be for City Council and profanity is not permitted. After you recall, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is David Brennigan.
Good morning. My name is Dave Brennigan, representing Lawrenceville. I'm the Executive Director of Lawrenceville United and a co-facilitator of the Pittsburgh Housing Justice Table, which is a citywide coalition of organizations and individuals focused on addressing our affordable housing crisis. Every person in our city deserves an affordable place to call home, but housing in our city is becoming increasingly unaffordable, and sadly evictions are all too commonplace when an increasing body of research consistently shows that evictions have devastating effects on individuals disproportionately households with children and black moms in particular. Evictions are a key driver of homelessness, chronic school absence, children, racial disparities, and even death. Yet faced with such a consequential issue, nationally only 3% of tenants in eviction cases have an attorney compared to 83% of landlords, which exacerbates existing power imbalances between landlords and tenants. As the author Matthew Desmond has said, eviction is not just a condition of poverty, it is a cause of it. Against this trend, 22 jurisdictions across the United States have begun implementing a right to counsel to guarantee legal representation for people facing eviction. Together, we have the opportunity to make Pittsburgh the 23rd. So I'm here in support of Councilman Gross's legislation and everyone who has joined us at our press conference this morning. We're really grateful for all of your support. Creating a right to counsel program here in Pittsburgh would build on and scale the success of an amazing local program, the Lawyer of the Day Program, that already is getting great results in four of our 12 magistrates in the city. The outcomes are pretty incredible. Before this intervention, 86% of cases were won by landlords with the Lawyer of the Day Program in place. These outcomes have been flipped on their head, and we're seeing over 70% of cases result in a positive outcome for the tenant. Similar programs across the country have found similar results. Every neighborhood and every tenant in the City of Pittsburgh deserves access to this program, and the legislation introduced today would go a long way to providing the dedicated funding necessary to guarantee legal assistance to every tenant facing eviction in Pittsburgh. So we hope council will pass it. Finally, just one note on the use of Stop the Violence Funds. I just want to make a point that the evidence is really clear that eviction prevention is violence prevention and crime prevention. A 10-year study in Philadelphia found that higher rates of eviction correspond to greater rates of homicide, robbery, and burglary, and were more strongly correlated than even rates of poverty in neighborhoods. And similar studies across the entire country have consistently found similar research. So again, keeping people in their homes is not just critical to the fabric of our communities, but also to violence prevention, to education outcomes for our kids, to health outcomes, to addressing racial disparities. And so we are excited to move right to counsel forward with council support. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Allison McAttee. I do not see her online. Is Allison with us? If not, our next registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Belsuver, Cairo, Egypt. I am the Global Intelligence Society candidate for president 2024. GlobalIntelligenceSociety.org. Concerns of council have to do with vote and freedom of speech, VVFW, vote by voter verification, citizen being able to check on his or her vote, and freedom of speech uncensored. That includes vulgar, bleepies, English-only, junk word RP Trump, and vacant pseudo ghettoes, English-only, juggle word DP Harris. A problem. You people who call yourselves representatives of Pittsburgh's are the establishment. So anti-disestablishmentarianism regarding vote by voter verification is expected. But more than 70% of the Gen Z people in this city and across the United States and millennials are pro-disestablishmentarian generally and pro-VVFW specifically. So you people are in the way. Solution: execute strategies to get VVFW Pittsburgh citywide, PA statewide, and US nationwide. Vote by voter verification for whom? The Barun Daya, African Hauser, strategy one. Kaluba Lanta, challenge, the US Kothan Kali, which is the US Supreme Court. Two, Iowa Tarda, implement VVFW in all states. I contacted the US Supreme Court publicly on VVFW, 26 July 2016, July 2020, 26 September 2023. Vote by voter verification for whom? Sen Yoka Ni, Asian Nihongo, strategy two. Sozo Suro, create. Shimin Shihai, Tokyo Shi Su Temu, Citizen Control Vote System. I outlined the VVFW vote verification and retrieval system, VVVRS, under the control of citizens in every neighborhood in Pittsburgh and cities across the United States detailing the VVVRS, 6 September 2023. Nothing in the Constitution of the United States prevents us from doing so, so we are. So get out of the way. A third strategy is to combat, combate, español, the anti-disestablishmentarian positions that are advocated by KDKA, WTAE, and WPXI. And I advocate blogs, but I do not advocate anybody doing protests in the street because it's too dangerous.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marilyn McGrady.
Good morning. My name is Maddie McGrady. I'm a social worker and a program manager with the Human Rights City Alliance. We're a grassroots network of residents and community organizations focused on raising awareness of international human rights frameworks and bringing human rights home. I'm also a renter in the Pittsburgh Highland Park neighborhood, and I also rented in Pittsburgh's North Shore, Troy Hill, and Friendship neighborhoods for a number of years. I'm speaking in support of Councilwoman Gross's bill to allocate funding for eviction prevention in Pittsburgh. As we've heard, this bill is about so much more than housing. But because access to safe and stable, affordable housing is foundational for pretty much anything, as a social worker and working in the social services for the past seven to eight years, I've really seen firsthand how pervasive and catastrophic the effects of eviction and homelessness can be. I've prepared comments, but I'm really here to speak from the heart because my work is what has led me here. And you know, I grew up in Mount Lebanon. I didn't experience housing instability or hardship really myself. But if you've seen what I've seen in working in the community and sitting with people who are experiencing the distress of facing eviction, losing their housing, having nowhere to go and no one to turn to, you would be here speaking too. There's nowhere else that I could be. And it is my work and my humanity that have led me here, and this is really the right thing to do. So I hope you will support this bill. It's, I think, unequivocally a step in the right direction to ensuring that everyone has a safe, stable, and affordable place to live in the city. And as we've heard, it is more than just housing. It's about children and their education, employment stability, financial stability, supporting people's mental and physical health, supporting women and LGBTQIA+ folks, supporting refugees and immigrants, supporting single parents, and yes, saving our city money by investing in prevention instead of frankly hemorrhaging money into programs that are purely reactive. So I want to say lastly that we have, I think, actually a really great and robust network of supportive social services in Pittsburgh, but social workers need tools to be able to help people. And for too long, we've had nowhere to turn to assist people with housing, and this would allow us to be able to help. So thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jamie Marie Christian.
I'm not sure what I kind of developed.
It's quite okay.
My name's Jamie Marie Christian. I'm the founder and executive director of an organization called Let Us Turn Up the Beat Sustainability Collective. We are based in Carrick. And the reason I'm here today is I was brought to my attention last week that there were some questions that Councilwoman Kail Smith had about the Food Justice Fund. And from what I understand, they centered around the same questions that were asked last year about sustainability, also accountability, and transparency. So I'm not sure if this has been resolved yet. If not, the things I just wanted to point out, you know, for public accountability for public funds and getting food to hungry residents, they kind of run hand in hand. You know, the ways to do that are to set strict guidelines for funding, including not allowing for-profit entities who have investors through public trading or crowdfunding investment opportunities to apply. The best way to determine the future is to look at the past, review final reports from past funding for applicants or their fiscal sponsors, require multiple ways to measure success, for example, surveys, interviews, actual financial data. Governance Committee, utilize it to the best of your ability. They're there, to the point where they're getting the RFPs out and the applications. I mean, they really can provide other services. Have them work with legal to provide oversight and monthly, semi-monthly, quarterly reviews. And also for the sustainability beyond government funding, local and national foundations. We have over $75 billion in foundation money in the City of Pittsburgh. The 2026 NFL Draft and other sports activities are very good sources of revenue for the city, and additional taxes can be added to those. Also asking the NFL for a donation. I mean, they could use good publicity always because they're not the NHL. We got some good guys there. NFL's a little questionable. Also, a portion of sales tax from increased revenues generated from the for-profits that would be getting the funds from the Food Justice Funds. So it's not just nonprofits, especially in round two. Excuse me. Finally, recreational marijuana will be happening in the next two years in Pennsylvania. Part of the money from that, the tax money, will be going to municipalities. Governor Shapiro estimates it'll be about $250 million in the first year, with a 20% tax on recreational marijuana sales. Michigan, I believe, has close to 30% of the money that goes to municipalities. And then in New York, it's around 30% as well that's split evenly between counties. So again, I don't know if this has already been resolved, but that was just what I wanted to share. So thank you so much for your time and have a great day.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cheryl Stevens.
Good morning. My name is Cheryl Stevens, and I'm a resident and renter of Aspen Wall in honorary Pittsburgh neighborhood. I'm the community organizing manager for Pittsburghers for Public Transit, a grassroots union of transit riders, workers, and neighbors who are organizing for expanded, affordable, inaccessible public transit system that meets all needs with no communities left behind. Similarly, everyone deserves an affordable and accessible place to call home. But housing in the City of Pittsburgh is becoming increasingly unaffordable. I'm speaking to all of you this morning as a member of the Housing Justice Table for PPT because we recognize the direct relationship between public transit connected communities and access to housing. Low-income communities who depend on transits and affordable housing face a transit crisis and an increasing risk of displacement in Pittsburgh and in Allegheny County. Participants actually of the previous low-income program, now the permanent Allegheny Go, half-fare program, are primarily heads of household with children, most of whom are sole providers, as many people have commented, who face the most risk of being evicted. The harm that occurs when renters are displaced from their homes and have to be relocated far from their support systems and into housing far from public transit access is preventable. Councilman Gross's legislation would critically provide the dedicated funding for residents facing eviction to access legal representation and housing stabilization supports. This funding is a critical step in guaranteeing the legal representation for every tenant, every renter facing eviction in the City of Pittsburgh. And as an organization, we cannot wait to see that day. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dana Doni.
Hello, Council. I too am confused as to whether or not I need to be here today. I was making sure that we were going to see Resolution 2024-0726 introduced this week. Does anybody know if that is happening before I go on? It is? Okay. So I'm here to assure that any questions that remain unresolved get answered within the next two days so that we can assure that this is introduced tomorrow at the Standing Committee meeting and that we move forward with it. I was at a meeting last night for the Hilltop Food Access Working Group, and where we thought we should have been celebrating the eventual RFP release for August, I had to go through what seemed like Groundhog's Day yet again to say that there was some kind of pause, some kind of problem. I didn't understand what, or how, or why, but I wanted to make sure that I was here again offering support, both as Just Harvest and as a member of this community. If there are any questions that we can have one-on-ones with or any... Teresa, thank you for joining us, but Jamie was just up talking about some of the points that have been raised over the last week, trying to give more assurances if there are any questions. At this point, the one question that I saw that was raised was how do we make sure that hungry people are getting access to food now? I'm very upset because this is an entire growing season, an entire growing season, where thousands and thousands and thousands and thousands and thousands of pounds of food could have been directly distributed to our communities, and we missed this growing season. I have farmers, I have community members, I have people left and right asking me when, where, how, and why this is happening. I don't have answers, so I need you all to provide me the answers at this point. I am in the communities. I worked with Councilman Mosley. We had an amazing community meeting in Homewood to discuss, just like I came to all of you and said, I will gladly do community meetings in each and every one of your communities to address and talk about the Food Justice Fund. We did that. And now here we are, stymied again. We want to be continuing. We want to go to Warwick's community. We're trying to do that right now with Hazelwood Initiative. We're trying to even work within communities that might have ideas like yours, Strasburger, which maybe it's not in the high priority food areas, but still needs this information to be able to help get it to other people. I can't do anything when there is no RFP coming. I can't do anything when there is no Food Justice Fund. I am so frustrated. I think you all understand. You've seen me for almost four years, four years. I've been asking for 1% of $300-plus thousand, or $300 million, 1% of ARPA funding to go to food infrastructure and food access. I do not know how many more times I need to come. I will keep coming. But all of you know that there's a deadline here, and I can't tell anymore if this is politics. That's what I need to know. Is this politics, or is this about getting food, food access, and food infrastructure to our communities?
Our next speaker is John Hanrahan. I apologize about not pronouncing that correctly.
Close enough. Good morning. My name is John Hanrahan. I live on Cotoma Street in Fineview in Council District One. Councilman Wilson, if you're here, hello. I'm here to speak in favor of Bill 770, the measure to prevent evictions through right to counsel plus in the city. I was very... I've been following this measure, this idea, for quite a while, and I'm so thrilled to be here on this day, to see the legislation on the table ready to be passed by a majority of council. Thank you to all the cosponsors. I was very curious to see where the money would come from. We all know that 2, 3, 4 million doesn't just appear out of nowhere because we need it, because we want it. You have to find the money in the budget. And so when I woke up this morning and I looked on Legistar and read the bill and saw that it was coming from the Stop the Violence Fund, at first I went, oh, that's a surprise. And then I thought, that's perfect. That's perfect. Because when a landlord and a tenant have a dispute because of some lack of funds out of the tenant's control, and instead of working it out, figuring it out, the landlord goes to court to remove that tenant from their home, is that not violence? And when a child's first interaction with a man with a badge and a gun is when he's there to take him out of his, in his mother's home, is that not violence? And is that not bound to increase the chances of future acts of violence? Does that not make it more likely that those kids, that that next generation, will act out, out of rage or out of necessity? So I think to fund this program through Stop the Violence Fund is brilliant. It's perfect. And to have this program at all is so necessary and so right. So thank you again to the five sponsors and cosponsors. Councilman Wilson, I hope to see you on this bill as well soon.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ajab G. Chahan-Kahin.
Greetings. In like Allen Kahin, as proto Mayan for the light in me honors the light in you. I am an Aborigine American matriarch, and my title is Yahalahi Chanal Kahin, located in the Delaware Territory, as you all would call so-called Pittsburgh. I am also a graphic designer and a clerical assistant of America's Aboriginal Environmental Law Protectors and EPA Food Forestry Arts and Culture, who Chief Espomay Chakmam Yahalahi is the founder of our indigenous community work. My peoples are the original beings, the original stewards, the original inhabitants of our ancestral lands, the Americas, including the islands, the Unkwe Onkwe from our great law of peace. So my statements today will reflect invoking my people's story, our perspectives, our constitutional indigenous rights, Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3, the etymology of tax that we are not to be evaluated, estimated, assessed, handled, touched, to burden, impose a tax, censure, charge, put a strain on to enter on a list, or enroll. We are not to be any of these nefarious actions. And in the Bouvier's dictionary states, Indians, the aborigines of this country are so-called. My people are acknowledged in multiple maxims of law and the lawful documents such as the Constitution of the United States, Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3, and excluding Indians not taxed, the Delaware Treaty, the Northwest Ordinance, the American Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People, the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, House Congress Resolution 331, whereas my people are acknowledged to the development of the United States Constitution and to reaffirm that continuing government-to-government relationship with my people, 100th Congress Second Session, and the list continues. We are not to be confused with Title 25 Native Americans, who are also within the box of person, persons, immigrants, foreigners, citizens, naturalized citizens, non-citizens, residents, humans, individuals, all under the jurisdiction of the United States, which is a corporation, aka a business. My people, the Aboriginal Americans, have been reclassified as so-called Indian, so-called color, so-called Negro, so-called Black. We are not social-political constructs, and we will no longer stand for continuously being discriminated against, conspired against, and being committed genocidal acts against my people. I invoke again my people's constitutional indigenous rights. Thomas Seeth of the O. Jordan case, Walter Ashby Plucker justified with the state encouraging them to reclass non-reservation Indians to Negroes, which has since been repealed. American Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People, recognizing the rights of my people are both essential and historical significance to the present and future of the Americas, to reaffirming that my people, the original diverse societies with their own identities that constitute an integral part of the Americas. Are you going to honor your immigrant ancestors' oath to the Constitution?
Thank you very much. Our last registered speaker is Ms. Brandy Fisher.
Did we save the best for last?
Good morning, everybody. Today, I'm hearing about housing, I'm hearing about food insecurity, and I'm hearing about violence. And all of these issues help us prevent crime and help public safety. But we have funds for housing, the Housing Opportunity Fund. We have funds for violence, Stop the Violence Fund, and I'm hoping we have a fund for food insecurity with the Food Justice Fund. I'm here today because I'm under the impression that we have $11.7 million in the Stop the Violence Fund that is sitting there because the previous administration made a request for $2 million and never used it. So when the new administration came in, they were under the impression that they had to exhaust this $2 million before they could request new funds. They now know that that is not true. I wholeheartedly agree with right to counsel for those facing eviction and for the need to be funded at scale. But I do not agree with taking from one area of great need to satisfy another. Far too often, Black-led organizations and issues that predominantly impact Black, Brown, and poor people are severely under-resourced and left to fight over the same source of funds which equate to crumbs being invested and outcomes being impossible to meet. This practice must end. There have been funds established for these very specific reasons. When I was employed at Pittsburgh United as the Director of Organizing, we established a Housing Opportunity Fund. I worked very closely with the URA, directly supervised the work of the Housing Justice Table, and assisted in building and strategizing for advocacy. So no matter the organization I work with, I will always advocate for the needs of the population I serve, and housing is a great need for youth and families. More money should be put into the fund specifically created for this very reason, to fund that need, just as more money needs to be put into the Stop the Violence Fund to meet the need, not less. Simply because the previous administration chose not to put this money in the community, whether that be intentional or unintentional, and it accumulated, doesn't mean it is not needed. I question if anyone spoke to anti-violence advocates, violence interrupters, or any of these organizations focused on violence prevention and intervention regarding the need for resources and how the cut would impact the work they do. I see youth daily who need employment, educational resources, housing, mental health support, clothing, food, just basic necessities that my aforementioned speakers mentioned, and we are struggling just to meet these needs. It's not like we're simply saying, since we have this surplus of money, let's take from this fund to help this other need, which we know also prevents violence. But what we're saying is, let's cut this fund in the future, every year, $2 million, and leave $3 million for Stop the Violence. $11.7 million, I could agree with using some of that money to help eviction prevention, but not to cut the whole fund going forward. My request is that we use some of what is there to assist folks with eventual eviction right now. But we do not approve this of the legislation to continually cut the portion of the $5 million slated.
Thank you. Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time, provide your name, neighborhood for the record. You'll also be given three minutes to speak.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having me here. I think this is my first time speaking in person, but I see you all on YouTube quite often, and I've testified via Zoom before. My name is Sam Spearing. I work as the Community Development Manager for Bloomfield Development Corporation, and I'm also a renter and resident in the neighborhood of Bloomfield. I'm proud to be here today with fellow members of the Housing Justice Table to support Councilwoman Gross's legislation to provide dedicated funding for legal counsel for tenants facing evictions. I want to thank the Councilwoman and other members that have co-sponsored this bill for taking this step forward and supporting and protecting renters in the city of Pittsburgh. You've already heard other people hit all of the talking points on why this would be so impactful, so I'm not going to reiterate those statistics. But I will say that voicing my support for this legislation is a no-brainer in a neighborhood like Bloomfield, where nearly 3,500 or 70% of our households are renting as of 2020. And particularly when we know the devastating effects of evictions disproportionately fall on black women and single mothers and households with children generally. And shortly before testifying, I was told that last year, our Magisterial District, which currently is not supported by the Law of the Day Program, where Kate Lovelace is the judge, saw 290 eviction filings last year. That's over five of our neighbors facing eviction per week over the course of the year, which is kind of mind-boggling to me that that many of our neighbors are dealing with eviction on a weekly basis. So, you know, I'll just reiterate that I'm excited to see this bill move forward, and I look forward to it passing in a month or two. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Rhonda Davis-Moore, and I'm the Executive Director of Zakaya House Housing. At Zakaya House, we work with populations to reduce recidivism, incarceration and homelessness. Our population is just not black mothers. Our population is all people, fathers and mothers, white, black, Chinese. So I don't want to stand up here and just say that this is what, you know, what stocks is saying, that it falls on just the housing component. We are recipients of the Stop the Violence Grant. However, we probably could have used a lot more money than we had received. Grateful for what we did get, but I guess the person who was over the money to end of the day probably could have asked for a little bit more. I do work with the populations who are violent. Right? We parole them from state prisons, we get them from halfway houses, and what other program should be funded but a program such as mine, that tries to help them not go back to prison, not reoffend, teach them ways where they can be successful in this world of ours? I do understand that housing is a component that we need to look at, but Zakaya House looks at that in all aspects of our work. I do not think that a budget should be cut at all. I am just learning about this this morning, so I have to look more into it, but I believe that the money should go where it needs to go. If it's a Stop the Violence Grant, then that's what we should be getting. Once again, my name is Rhonda Davis-Moore. I work for Zakaya House Housing. I'm the Executive Director, actually, and I work with the most violent people that come out of prison. And so if we're going to fund something, don't hold back the funds. Give it to us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we'll move on to the presentation of papers, beginning with Councilman Sharlin, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness. Councilman, no worries. No new.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology.
Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Deborah Elagros presents Bill 770, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title II Fiscal Article V Special Funds, Chapter 237 Stop the Violence Fund for the purpose of dedicating a portion of the fund to support the City of Pittsburgh's ongoing work to provide legal counsel for tenants facing evictions. And Bill 776, Resolution Authorizing and Directing the Director of the Department of Finance to Limit Eligibility for the Acquisition of Properties Through the City's Sideyard Sale Program to Residents Who Own and Occupy Property That Directly Abuts the Vacant Lot That Is to Be Disposed.
Madam, Councilwoman Strasburger, sorry.
I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor to Bill 770, please.
Will do. Thank you. Councilman Sharlin.
Sorry, Council President, I would like to be added as a co-sponsor as well.
Will be, will do. Thank you.
Council President also, point of order for the Clerk's Office, the co-sponsors on 776 were to read Councilmember Lavelle as co-sponsor as well.
Yes.
Sorry.
Yep. Thank you. That takes us to Councilwoman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Sorry, is he there?
I know he's away. He may not be still with us. Councilwoman Gross for Councilwoman Mosley.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. That takes us to Councilwoman Kail Smith, Chair of Recreation, Youth and Senior Services.
I was going to say no new papers, but after having a conversation, thank you, madam. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Teresa Kail Smith presents Bill 777, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 863 of 2018 effective January 1st, 2019 as amended entitled. Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program, Approving the 2017 through 2022 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Birmingham Foundation by $13,000 and Sheridan United Methodist Church by $500 and Increasing Elliott West End Athletic Association by $5,000 and the Open Door by $8,500 and Authorize Subsequent Agreements. And Bill 779, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to Enter Into An Agreement or Agreements with New Sunrise for the Management and Disbursement of Grassroots and Small-Scale Investments for the City of Pittsburgh's Food Justice Fund for a sum not to exceed $1,650,000 through December 31st, 2026, and for the payment of the costs thereof.
Councilwoman Kail Smith, do you wish to waive Rule 8 on your bills?
I'm sorry, I want to make a motion to waive or wait on the Food Justice Bill. What is it?
There's both 777 and 779.
Just make a motion to waive the rules of counsel for both bills.
Thank you. Any second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both bills will appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. That takes us to Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Erica Strasburger presents Bill 767, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Management and Budget to Enter Into An Agreement or Agreements with Catapult Greater Pittsburgh for Services Relating to Delivering Comprehensive Financial Counseling Services to the City of Pittsburgh Residents for a Sum Not to Exceed $222,598. Bill 768, Resolution Authorizing 36 Open-End Professional Services Agreements with Multiple Vendors to Provide Professional Services on an On-Call Basis as Required Related to Various Professional Services as Needed by the Various Departments of the City of Pittsburgh, each Agreement Being at an Amount Not to Exceed $1,500,000 Annually for a Three-Year Term and Providing for Funding of the Costs Thereof. And Bill 769, Resolution Authorizing 36 Open-End Professional Services Agreements with Multiple Vendors to Provide Professional Services on an On-Call Basis as Required Related to Various Professional Services as Needed by the Various Departments of the City of Pittsburgh, each Agreement Being at an Amount Not to Exceed $750,000 Annually for a Three-Year Term and Providing for Funding of the Costs Thereof.
Councilwoman Strasburger?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules of counsel so that seven, Bills 767, 768, 7, and 769 all appear on tomorrow's agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All three bills will be on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. That takes us to Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Barbara Warwick presents Bill 738, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City of Pittsburgh, the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Apply for a Grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Economic Development's Greenways, Trails and Recreation Program for the Shenley Park Connector Project. The grant proposal includes an ask of $250,000 with a local match of $123,195.42 for a total project cost of $373,195.42 for this stated purpose. And Bill 771, Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Finance and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into certain temporary construction easements on certain properties in the Eighth and Tenth Ward of the City of the City in order to advance the Penn Ave. Avenue Reconstruction Phase Two Project. Costs for these temporary construction easements shall not exceed $20,000 reimbursable at 80%.
Motion to waive Rule 8 on 0738 and 0771, please.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill, both bills will be on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. That takes us to Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. And for myself, if we can begin with the appointment.
Councilman Ardana Lavelle presents Bill 772, Resolution Informing City Council of the reapport, a reapportment of Mark Schmeler as a member of the City-County Task Force on Disabilities with a Term to Expire January 1st, 2026.
May we have a motion to read, receive and file?
To move.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That takes us to our three communications.
Bill 773, Communication from Jake Pollock, Director of Office of Management and Budget, Submitting to City Council the Attached Status Update from the Grants Office for the Week Ended July 19th, 2024. Bill 774, Communication from Jake Pollock, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Acting Pay Requests on behalf of the Department of Public Works for Jarrett Bogdansky, Keith Younger, Donald Myers, Joseph Rush, and the Department of Parks and Recreation for Vanessa Calderon, per the Acting Pay Policy Revised in June 2018. And Bill 775, Communication from Mayor Ed Ganey Appointing Ian Fitzgerald Deputy Director of the Department of Finance and Thomas Link Chief Development Officer of the Urban Redevelopment Authority to the Monitoring Committee for the Downtown Enhanced Lurder Program, per Section 268.09 of the Pittsburgh Code.
May we have a motion to read, receive and file?
To move.
Need a second. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All bills will be read, received and filed, and that takes us to Reports of Committee for Final Action, beginning with Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, presenting on Committee of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Erica Strasburger presents Bill 760, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for July 17th, 2024, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 644, Resolution Amending Resolution 909 of 2023, which authorized the Fee Schedule for 2024 pursuant to Chapter 170 of the City Code by revising the Employee Parking Fees as recommended by the Director of Human Resources and Civil Service. Bill 676, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement with the Law Firm of Citrin Alex PC in connection with matters to be heard before Pennsylvania's Orphans Court at a cost not to exceed $60,000 over one year. Bill 677, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Edward William Vaughn Jr. in an Amount Not to Exceed $3,000 over one year in Full and Final Settlement of a Claim for Damage to His Vehicle from a City DPW Vehicle on April 22nd, 2024. Bill 678, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Bobby Spidel Jr. in an Amount Not to Exceed $2,881.81 over one year in Full and Final Settlement of a Claim for Damage to His Parked Vehicle from a City DPW Vehicle on December 19th, 2023. Bill 690, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 768 of 2009 effective December 31st, 2009 entitled. Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2010 Capital Budget and the 2010 Community Development Block Grant Program and the Improving the 2010 through 2014 Capital Improvement Program by Adjusting Various Line Items in Conformance with City Council's 2010 Capital Budget Amendments by Removing Unencumbered Funds from Projects Pending Closure pursuant to Chapter 218 of the City Code. Bill 691, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 855 of 2011 effective December 29th, 2011 entitled. Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2012 Capital Budget and the 2012 Community Development Block Grant Program and Approving the 2012 through 2017 Capital Improvement Program by Adjusting Various Line Items in Conformance with City Council's 2012 Capital Budget Amendments by Removing Unencumbered Funds from Projects Pending Closure pursuant to Chapter 218 of the City Code. Bill 692, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 772 of 2012 effective January 1st, 2013 entitled. Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2013 Capital Budget and the 2013 Community Development Block Grant Program and Approving the 2013 through 2018 Capital Improvement Program by Removing Unencumbered Funds from Projects Pending Closure pursuant to Chapter 218 of the City Code. Bill 693, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 858 of 2014 effective January 1st, 2015 entitled. Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2015 Capital Budget and the 2015 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2015 through 2020 Capital Improvement Program by Removing Unencumbered Funds from Projects Pending Closure pursuant to Chapter 218 of the City Code. Bill 694, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 816 of 2015 effective December 18th, 2015 entitled. Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2016 Capital Budget and the 2016 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2016 through 2021 Capital Improvement Program by Removing Unencumbered Funds from Projects Pending Closure pursuant to Chapter 218 of the City Code. Bill 695, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 797 of 2017 effective December 28th, 2017 entitled. Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2018 Capital Budget and the 2018 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2018 through 2023 Capital Improvement Program by Removing Unencumbered Funds from Projects Pending Closure pursuant to Chapter 218 of the City Code. Bill 696, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 863 of 2018 effective January 1st, 2019 entitled. Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program by Removing Unencumbered Funds from Projects Pending Closure pursuant to Chapter 218 of the City Code. Bill 697, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 840 of 2019 effective January 1st, 2020 entitled. Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2020 Capital Budget and the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2020 through 2025 Capital Improvement Program by Removing Unencumbered Funds from Projects Pending Closure pursuant to Chapter 218 of the City Code. Bill 698, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 647 of 2020 effective December 20- Bill six ninety-eight, resolution further amending Resolution number six forty-seven of two thousand twenty, effective December twenty-third, two thousand twenty, entitled. Resolution adopting and approving the two thousand twenty-one Capital Budget and the two thousand twenty-one Community Development Block Grant Program and the two thousand twenty-one through two thousand twenty-six Capital Improvement Program by removing unencumbered funds from projects pending closure pursuant to Chapter two eighteen of the City Code. Bill six ninety-nine, resolution further amending Resolution number seven twenty-three of two thousand twenty-two, effective December twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, entitled. Resolution adopting and approving the two thousand twenty-three Capital Budget and the two thousand twenty-three Community Development Block Grant Program and the two thousand twenty-three through two thousand twenty-eight Capital Improvement Program by removing unencumbered funds from projects pending closure pursuant to Chapter two eighteen of the City Code. And Bill seven hundred, resolution further amending Resolution number eight fifty-seven of two thousand twenty-three, effective December twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, as amended, entitled. Resolution adopting and approving the two thousand twenty-four Capital Budget and the, the proposed two thousand twenty-four Community Development Program and the two thousand twenty-four through two thousand twenty-nine Capital Improvement Program by reappropriating and reallocating funds a closed due to the requirements of Chapter eight, two eighteen of the City Code.
You have heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor to pass the bills will aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Schlossberger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lovell President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bill has received a lead required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Anthony Coghill, presenting on the Committee of Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Anthony Coghill presents Bill seven sixty-one, report of the Committee on Public Safety and Wellness for July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill six sixty-one, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of the U.S. Marshals Service in an amount not to exceed seventeen thousand eight hundred six dollars to return seized funds in accordance with cases filed in the United States District Court, Western District of Pennsylvania.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor to pass this bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Schlossberger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lovell President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bill has received a lead required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Barbara Warwick, presenting on the Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Barbara Warwick presents Bill seven sixty-two, report of the Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill six eighty-two, resolution authorizing the mayor and, mayor of the city of Pittsburgh and the Department of Public Works to apply for a grant from Pennsylvania Department of Economic Development's Greenways, Trails, and Recreation Program for the Robert E. Williams Park Project. The grant proposal includes an ask of two hundred fifty thousand dollars with a local match of thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for a total grant project cost of two hundred eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for this stated purpose.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor to pass it, passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Schlossberger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lovell President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bills have received a lead required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilperson Bob Charlin, presenting on the Committee of Human Resources.
Thank you.
Councilperson Robert Charlin presents Bill seven sixty-three, report of the Committee on Human Resources for July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill six six, six sixty, resolution providing for an agreement with just medi- mediation Pittsburgh to provide information about the Commission on Human Relations, Work, and Fair Housing Laws to the landlords and tenants they see for med- mediation at a cost not to exceed thirty thousand dollars initially and the option to renew for an additional year with a maximum total not to exceed sixty thousand dollars over two years.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor to pass the bill will aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Schlossberger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lovell President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Takes us to council, excuse me. The bills have received a lead required number of votes. It is passed finally. Now that takes us to Councilwoman Teresa Kale Smith, presenting on the Committee of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Teresa Kale Smith presents Bill seven sixty-four, report of the Committee on Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services for July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill six seventy-five, resolution authorizing the mayor and Department of Parks and Recreation on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements with Key's Service Corp. for the two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five AmeriCorps Summer Program. Said agreement or agreements involves the matching of funds and shall be at a total cost to the city not to exceed forty thousand dollars over a two-year period.
You have heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor to pass the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Schlossberger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye. Aye.
Mr. Lovell President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bill has received a lead required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Deborah Gross, presenting on the Committee of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Deborah El-Gross presents Bill seven sixty-five, report of the Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management and Technology for July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill six sixty-two, resolution amending Resolution eight forty-four of two thousand twenty-three, authorizing the mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an amended agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with Cohen Law Group and CTC Technology and Energy for renegotiation of the city's cable franchise agreements with Comcast and Verizon and for consultation on development of fiber and wireless telecommunications assets and policy by increasing the approved amount by sixty thousand dollars for an amended total cost not to exceed seven hundred eleven thousand, two hundred thirteen dollars and seventy cents over five years. And Bill six sixty-three, resolution authorizing the mayor and Department of Parks and Recreation on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements with Information Age Technologies, Inc. for the co-pilot annual subscription fee for the Healthy Active Living Senior Center's software subscription used for data collection and the reporting of services to Allegheny County Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging as mandated by the city's contract with Allegheny County for a three-term, for a three-year term. The total amount for two thousand twenty-four will be a cost, will be at a cost not to exceed twenty-one thousand dollars with future annual amounts to be negotiated on an as-needed basis.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor to pass the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Schlossberger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lovell President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bill has received a lead required number of votes. It is passed finally, and that takes us to Councilman Kohari Mosley, presenting on the Committee on Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Kohari Mosley presents Bill seven sixty-six, report of the Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill six sixty-four, resolution authorizing the mayor, the Director of Public Works, and the Director of Finance on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into a permanent easement agreement with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority to maintain, operate, repair, inspect, repair, remove, and/or abandon an existing public water facility and a temporary easement agreement to perform all work necessary to complete the project located on city-owned property at no cost to the city. Bill six sixty-five, resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, in and to the publicly owned properties in the fifth ward of the city of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as block twenty-seven B, lot one ninety-nine, zero Anaheim Street, council district number six, at no cost to the city. Bill six sixty-six, resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, in and to the publicly owned property in the fifth ward of the city of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as block twenty-five S, lot two thirty-eight, zero Marcella Street, council district number six, at no cost to the city. Bill six sixty-seven, resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, in and to the publicly owned properties in the third ward of the city of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as block nine M, lots ninety-nine A and one hundred, zero Cliff Street, council district number six, at no cost to the city. Bill six sixty-eight, resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, in and to the publicly owned properties in the fifth ward of the city of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as block ten D, lots fifty-one, fifty-eight A and fifty-nine, two, twenty-seven oh two, twenty-seven twenty-four, and twenty-seven twenty-six Bedford Avenue, council district number six, at no cost to the city. Bill six sixty-nine, resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, in and to the publicly owned property in the twenty-seventh ward of the city of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as block seventy-five L, lot one twenty-one, sixteen eleven Antrim Street, council district number six, at no cost to the city. Bill six seventy, resolution amending Resolution two ninety-seven of two thousand twenty-two, effective June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, entitled, resolution authorizing the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, in and to the publicly owned properties in the twelfth ward of the city of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as block one twenty-four N, lots two eighty-one, two eighty-two, and two eighty-three, and block one twenty-five B, lots two eighty-one and two eighty-three, Meadow Street and Lincoln Avenue, council district number nine, by removing parcels block one twenty-five B, lots two eighty-one and two eighty-three, Lincoln Avenue, council district number nine, at no cost to the city. Bill six seventy-one, resolution repealing Resolution six nineteen of two thousand twenty-one, effective December thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, authorizing the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, in and to the publicly owned properties in the fifth ward of the city of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as block twenty-seven B, lots three ninety-two and three ninety-three, eight twenty-three, eight twenty-six and eight twenty-eight Shawnee Street, council district number six, at no cost to the city. Bill six seventy-two, resolution repealing Resolution six twenty of two thousand twenty-one, effective September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, authorizing the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, in and to the publicly owned properties in the eighteenth ward of the city of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as block fifteen R, lots two thirty and two eighty-one, eight forty-four Gearing Avenue and eight fourteen Delmont Avenue, council district number three, at no cost to the city. Bill six seventy-three, resolution repealing Resolution three sixty-eight of two thousand twenty-three, effective June tenth, two thousand twenty-three, authorizing the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, in and to the publicly owned properties in the fifth ward of the city of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as block twenty-six P, lot one sixty-four, council district number six, at no cost to the city. And Bill six seventy-four, resolution repealing Resolution one eighty-two of two thousand twenty-one, effective March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, authorizing the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, in and to the publicly owned properties in the fifth ward of the city of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as block twenty-six P, lots one fifty-six and one fifty-seven, located on the south side of Adelaide Street, east of Wichita Way, council district number six, at no cost to the city.
You have heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor to pass this of the bills will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Schlossberger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lovell President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bills have received a lead required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to motions and resolutions. Councilwoman Wilson?
Yes, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor for seven seven.
Will do. Thank you very much, Councilwoman Kale Smith.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to hold a cable cast public hearing on Bill seven oh one. It's a zoning code amendment. Currently, it's in the standing committees.
Second. Maybe one second. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll work with you to get that scheduled.
Thank you.
Any other members? Councilman?
I would like to call for a post-agenda on quality life ticketing.
Maybe one second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Quality of life ticketing. The clerk didn't hear you.
Sorry, yeah.
We'll work with you to get that scheduled. And then Councilwoman Kale Smith?
Thank you. On a separate, separate issue, I just want to say that there were a lot of commentators today about the food justice funding, and I just want the public to know what, what happened. First of all, I don't work well when people try to put pressure on me. I do the opposite. It works, everybody here knows that. It works the opposite on me. So I almost held the bill again, because all you had to do was pick up the phone and call me. But I actually talked to the administration last week, and they put forward a bill with, that includes, and I'm thankful for them, that includes that the controller has an opportunity to audit if need be the funds and that it will also give council the up or down vote on whoever they nominate for the committee. So, you know, so council has a say in what's going on in their district still. And that's all the bill, that was the only thing we held the bill for, was to make sure we worked with the administration on those. And I do want to thank them for working through that, but I think everybody knows, don't, don't do that to me. If you wanted something, you know, come talk to me. Otherwise, you're gonna, and same thing with the land bank. I do want to talk a little bit about the land bank. I saw somebody had sent me a letter to the editor, or an editorial or something, about the land bank and how council and the mayor's office are holding it up. And I'm just going to say this, that they see no good reason. Well, that's why we're in these seats and they're not. The reason why we, I'm holding that particular bill up is because I, there's a tri-party agreement between the school district and the county and the city. And I want council to be able to see what we're agreeing to in a contract. That is our job, and yes, we've seen it once and given the authority to go have that conversation, but anything could be added and put into a contract that we don't know, and the first people, the media and other people would, would hold accountable would be us. So we're making sure that whatever we do in that regard is in the best interest of the city of Pittsburgh and the residents that we serve. And I understand that there may be developers that might want to see editorials and might want to see things sped up a little bit. That just makes me think that maybe I'll hold it until after the break, and so we can have a, because when people start pushing and start doing those kinds of things, it raises my level of suspicion, especially when it involves money and land. So. So I'm going to, we'll have a conversation about that. But right now, we have a meeting scheduled. We were going to have it scheduled prior to the break. Now we'll talk during the break and maybe we'll move it after the break. Thank you.
Thank you. Towards your point, Councilwoman, sometimes editorials are also written without a lot of context, which is also not healthy for the public.
Yeah. Can I just say, it's the same editorial board that questions everything we're doing. And so it's like, you're questioning us and questioning the administration, but yet you want us to give one, you know, person control of all the land in the city. So, you know, I have some concerns about that. Whether, no matter who the administration is, no matter who the council is, I have some concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members? If not, we do have meeting announcements. This afternoon at one o'clock, council will hold an executive session on Judge McVeigh's ruling on conservatorship. Just so members are aware, staff will be allowed to attend that executive session. Also, this afternoon at one-thirty, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bills six forty-two and six forty-three. Speaker registration will close tomorrow at eleven-thirty a.m. And then tomorrow, Wednesday, July twenty-fourth, council will hold our regular standing committee meeting at ten a.m. Registration closes at nine a.m. Wednesday morning. To register to speak at these meetings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage or call the clerk's office at two five five twenty-one thirty-eight.
Just last thing, I still have your stuff in my, in your door here, because this is where you must have sat, and you left your comb in here. So you might want to get your stuff out.